You know, I check like I, you know, I just focus on getting things filed organized, put away, and this we were away from the office. So my office looks like a bomb went off. I just, and I can't stand it. It's giving me like anxiety.
Yeah, I hate that feeling.
Me too.
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi David.
Hi, you can hear me okay, right? Because I'm on the cellphone.
Yes.
We're live.
Okay, good.
Nobody say anything that you don't want to public to hear.
Teresa. Teresa, when you get a chance, send me 100 words about what happened at the meeting last night.
Yeah, okay. It might not take 100 words.
Say 100 words? What about 200 words?
Make, make it fit.
All right.
Uh, we're missing Brendan.
No, Brendan just joined. Victor is not join, Victor is not joining us tonight.
So then we're missing, uh, Tom Jones.
Oh, Tom's here.
He was just on.
I don't see him.
Yeah, his camera's off.
I'm eating.
Oh, there he is.
I'm eating.
Eating.
Don't talk with your mouth full, Tom.
I just.
I got six. Victor's not coming.
And Mr. File, I didn't hear from Mr. File.
Yeah, and one more.
There he is.
There he is.
Okay.
Oh, there's two of them. No, no, David's here too.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hello Amanda.
How are you?
A quick question between Amanda and Deb. Who's got the resolutions for carrying these two hearings?
We're just gonna, we don't have a resolution for them, that's, we make a motion in a second.
Yeah, but somebody, somebody's got to recite the resolution before the meeting, before the motion is made.
No, we just basically, the board picks the date, I suggest the day.
You pick the, yes, but somebody's got to recite the language of the resolution. So that we don't. Because the member who makes the motion is not going to know the exact phraseology.
Do you want me to finish my sentence or no?
I'm sorry.
I usually say that, but Amanda is welcome to say the language if you'd like, it's fine.
Tell me who I should look to.
Look to Amanda. Okay. The only thing I don't know is the reason why we were carrying, um, Parisi and if we have a date yet.
Uh, we, we have a reason, we don't let's, well, let's, should we start the meeting and then we'll discuss it?
Yeah, what time is it? Yeah, 7:33.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can we call the meeting to order?
It's, yes, turn the, turn the recorder on.
You're on.
At 7:32, the January 25th meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order. Here we have.
No, what? Oh, sorry. Want me to read the announcements or the?
I, I was about to say that.
Sorry, you paused.
Well, only because I have to breathe. Would you, would you please read the announcements?
Yes. Number one, call the order in a statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, and by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by this board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a quorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Pledge of allegiance. Let me get the flag up.
Where's the flag?
I'm sorry, work, it's, it's giving me a hard time here. Where is it? Okay, there we go. Hold on. Okay. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
One nation under God, with liberty and justice. With liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Committeeman Ray.
Present.
Committeeman Bolezza is excused tonight. Ms. Still?
Here.
Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File? Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sando?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
We also have with us tonight Amanda Wolf from the, as the board attorney, and, um, that's it. And you.
The most important.
I note that no members of the public are watching this Zoom broadcast, although they might be watching on television. Although even that is questionable because the township committee didn't get broadcast on television last week. So.
According to my sources, we are live on LHTV right now.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, at any rate, the two hearings that are on the agenda will be postponed, and Deborah, I look to you for a motion uh, to postpone Parisi.
Yes. Well, um, as we, you may or may not remember from the fall, uh, when we originally, no, actually, was it December? I don't know, anyway, when we originally postponed, or when Parisi asked to carry, they asked to carry because of issues they were working out between our engineer and their engineering service and the, um, JDEP. So they asked for a date with the hopes that they would be able to make it, or at least have some idea thereof, when they would be able to come back. But we've not heard from them, and so they were, you know, they were thinking originally that it was going to take them between four and six months to come back. So it is my recommendation to the board that we do not carry the application to a future date at this point, and we let the applicant know that at such time they come back with their revisions to their plans, that our engineer and their engineer confirm, and once that happens, that we can set a hearing date, and they will need to renotice to come back to the board. So that doesn't need necessarily a motion or anything. If the board is okay with that, that's what the plan will be.
Except that in December, we did carry them to this meeting, so don't we have to take some form of action to carry them further to an unspecified date?
No, because we're going to have them renotice anyway, so we don't have to carry it.
Oh, you're going to have them renotice?
Yes.
In that, okay.
So that means they, they're, in effect, they're going to start over. So nothing, nothing we've heard prior is relevant anymore, right?
Well, it's a new application anyway, that was supposed to come to us in December.
Okay.
So it's still a new application that will start from ground zero whenever.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, uh, let's talk about the Elite application.
Mr. Chairman.
I was contacted.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wait a minute, Don?
Yeah, just one quick question. Deb, on the Parisi application, did, have they, uh, pulled their stormwater report that was, uh, issued last year? Is that still relevant? Or are they reissuing all forms of documentation for that application?
That's a very good question, and I don't recall that information. I thought they just changed the site plan, but I'm not sure how that's affected. I can contact, um, our board engineer Samantha.
Check on the stormwater report, because I don't want to, you know, review something that's not going to be relevant.
Well, you, didn't you memorize the, uh, first version of it? I, I, so really, all you need is the changes.
Not if you start over.
Okay, Deborah, would you please know, ask Samantha if she has an answer? Otherwise, ask the applicant's engineer, and let us all know.
I will do so.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you.
No problem. Alright, so Elite Properties, I was contacted by, uh, the attorney for Elite. We did have a meeting with them too, to review, um, some of the plans, so they're ready to go. The unfortunate thing for tonight was that the, um, attorney had a conflict in another municipality, and was not able to find coverage for both municipalities. So he, they respectfully requested, um, initially, they requested February 8th, but I had, I informed them that we have February 22nd available. So we would need, um, so the motion to carry Elite Properties to February 22nd would be a motion that would include that the applicant would be carried with no further notice required on their part.
So moved.
Thank you.
Backing.
Is there any discussion on this motion? The last time we heard from Elite was in June. So we're going to be eight months stale, but this is a continuation of the application that we have heard in three media, three hearings last year. Uh, does anyone have understand that we need to bring ourselves up to speed by watching the previous three hearings before February 22nd?
Well, I mentioned at the reorg meeting when we were discussing it, that I will review to see, I will review the, um, days of testimony that they've already included, that have already been included on the record, and I will confirm members of the board who have not, um, were, were not present for certain meetings, and I will make sure that everybody certifies that they are, that you were all.
Yeah, but I'm talking about those of us who were there, might find it beneficial to, uh, watch the hearings that were conducted last year, because it is, they are so far out of date.
Those are on the website, right?
They're on the website.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
And maybe it's something that you want to watch for 10 minutes every night for the next month before you fall asleep.
Yeah, no. I assume they're going to summarize.
They will, because I'm, because they, they're engineering their site plans, I think we're, and, well, according to Liz Laney, I'll, I'll send out the reports this week to everybody. It's my understanding that the, she didn't have many changes, but it was more on the engineering side for the site plans.
Um, Amanda?
Yes.
I have a nagging feeling that I should talk to the attorney, and ask him as gently as I can to stop messing with our schedule. Can I do that?
I mean, sure, if we have a busy calendar and they've done this repeatedly, why not? Or I can reach out to him and figure out what he's doing, but does.
Why don't you, why don't you do that and drop my name as the good cop, bad cop situation?
Oh, nice, okay, that works.
Thank you.
Stephen and I always.
Listen, I mean, listen, I think it came down to the other municipality that he, that he was, he's working in tonight, has sewer available, and ours does not. So guess, guess who gets the boot tonight?
Yeah, I will reach out to him.
All right, may I have a motion to, uh, carry Elite?
I believe Mr. File made the motion and Mr. Malinowski.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
Sorry.
All in favor?
I.
I'm sorry.
Great.
Any opposed?
With no further notice.
Any opposed? I didn't see everybody raise their hand either one way or the other.
I think I did. Everybody raised their hand.
Next on the agenda is, uh, minutes of January 11th, our reorganization meeting. Are there any comments on the minutes which you all received earlier today and which I assume you have read?
It's fine to me.
Deb, can you check that email? I don't think I was on it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry.
From today, really?
Because I had to go to the website for the agenda.
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay.
All right.
Oh yeah, you're not on it. Well.
Okay. Oh, I'm telling you, I think I have COVID brain. Teresa, what's your email? I'll send them to you real quick. Okay. I apologize to the members of the board about the timestamp. I have to discuss with the, the new gentleman who's running the, um, I guess, the conversion from Zoom to the website, some, you know, when I look at Zoom, it gives me the actual time, you know, like 7:30, 7:35, 7:45, whatever, but the way they transposed it the last time, it didn't give that to me, so it was very hard to figure out how to put a timestamp in each section of it.
Let's go to the minutes. If no one has comments, and if we have Deborah's attention, I have comments. In the minutes at number nine, appointments. I'm sorry to say that we did not appoint Stephen Warner, Amanda Wolf, or John Kaplan as board attorneys. The resolution only appoints the firm.
Okay.
And similarly, uh, with the planner and the engineer, there are no names in those resolutions, just the firm names.
Okay.
Now, if you think that the individual names are important, we can redo those resolutions, otherwise, take the names out of the minutes.
Names out, done.
Okay, next at pardon me while I scroll here. Uh, at number 19, committee structure assignments and reports, master plan. Chairman Sando stated that he has had ongoing conversations with Mr. Hands and the board professionals. Actually, I had ongoing conversations with a number of members of the board. Uh, and rather than single out Mr. Hands, I'd appreciate it if you just changed that to read ongoing conversations with board members and board professionals.
Absolutely.
And finally, uh, at the bottom of 19, prison adjustments. Mr. Malinowski apparently appointed himself to the prison committee, because I don't remember doing that.
Oh, I thought he was, I was, thought it was, okay, Mr. Jones, was it just Mr. Jones, Mr. File, and Committeeman Ray then?
That's what I remember. Now, Mr. Malinowski, do you remember being appointed to the prison committee?
No, I was not appointed, uh, to the prison committee.
Okay, take.
Definitely an error.
Straight, although if you want to be on it.
No, that's okay. I think it's in good hands.
That's good. All right, done.
Okay, with those, does anyone else have, who read it, have any adjustments to make?
Nope.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th meeting? As amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Uh, at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Richardson to tell us where we stand on the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, real quickly to give you an overview, we've restarted the master plan, uh, subcommittee by having a meeting last week, uh, that, uh, was fruitful with regards to kind of setting some of the expectations among ourselves, uh, and also setting the course to be able to report by February 8th, a schedule for the implementation to complete the master plan with a goal to complete that in the year 2022. So we will provide details in the February 8th meeting, as we had discussed in our prior meeting.
If anyone has any major significant thoughts about the master plan, at, on the macroest, is that a word? On the most macro scale, please pass them on to the members of the committee. Uh, I, for one, am fixated these days on climate change. Trying to come up with a way that, uh, we can work climate change into the master plan. I read some background material, and it seems as if the state, in its wisdom, has decided that master, that climate change is too big an issue to be handled at the state and county level, so it should be handled at the local level. Uh, so there will be potentially 565 different master plans in the state to talk about uh, climate change. Uh, we could be the first. If anyone has any significant thoughts about how that climate change should be reflected in our master plan. And, and let me give you a proposal that I've been kicking around. Maybe one way to deal with climate change is to simply forbid any variance that has to do with stormwater. On one hand, that takes away property rights, and on the other hand, uh, sooner or later, nobody's going to be able to build anywhere near wetland.
Right.
Uh, is that a way to go? Well, it certainly is brutal. It's to the point.
I think we might be preempted if we prohibit all issuances of variances relating to stormwater, because I think the DEP would have preempted us.
Yeah, we could, we could establish standards.
Character.
It would be pretty hard, pretty high hurdles. I'm not suggesting that that's the way to go. Uh, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna take climate change seriously as it affects the town, that's an alternative. Uh, if anybody else has thoughts along that line, we certainly can discuss them at the next meeting, but it might be well to get your thoughts in writing and get them to the committee between now and February 8th, so that they can, uh, wrap that into their macro thinking.
I, I have an, uh, an excellent link to share through, uh, New Jersey looks at climate change as really resiliency uh, to their built infrastructure, and there's, uh, a good website that steps the, uh, local municipalities through the New Jersey Resiliency Program, and how to actually assemble a climate vulnerability assessment for their master plan. So I'll distribute that link, and I think that'll be a good background materials for people to review to facilitate a discussion. I think it's a good place to start on a macro level, uh, to at least appreciate and understand where the state's going, especially when we're considering really a 20-year planning horizon when we assemble these, uh, master plans.
Thank you. I look forward to it. At the last meeting, I, uh, read a flyer that was sent to me by, uh, one of the, uh, members of the public about a seminar that was being held, and I suggested that the members of the board and of the committee attend that seminar. Did anyone do that? I know I did not.
I did.
Alan, tell us what happened.
It was, uh, it was very, it was very interesting. It was, uh, a, a, a range of, of scientists and, uh, and, uh, a, a senior, um, state senator, and, uh, someone from, uh, I think League of Municipalities. It was, it was well done. Um, it touched on, on a lot of, a lot of good points. Um, no real conclusions out of it, but, um, it was, it was well worth it.
Did they talk about the logic of pushing this down to the municipal level?
They did. And they, and they talked about, uh, they talked about, um, master plan updates and the requirements that are coming down from, uh, from the, you know, the state government.
Uh, did they offer us any guidance?
No. Not at this point. This, we stay tuned. It was, it was a good initial, it was a good initial, um, um, hour meeting.
Did you get the, when you say not at this point, did you get the impression that there will be a point in the future when they do get to down to nuts and bolts?
Yes. Yeah, I don't think this is, I don't think that was a, an end all in itself. I think it's going to be ongoing.
Is there a mailing list that you can share with us so we can all get on board with the future meeting notices?
Uh, no, I didn't see one.
Okay.
But I'll look.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions on master plan or climate change?
I have a question for, um, File. Uh, Mr. File, they have a recording or a rebroadcast of that, um, seminar? That you're aware?
I'd have to check.
Okay.
One point that was, that was raised, Mr. Chairman, is, is they no longer, um, referred to it as climate change, they refer to it as climate crisis. Which I thought was, was, was a major, major step in, uh, in, uh, in changing the tone.
All the more reason why the municipalities should get involved rather than the state.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Alan. I appreciate you getting involved in that. Anything else anyone wants to say about master plan before the next meeting? Are there any committee reports? Any old or new business? I want to thank Deborah for getting out the schedule and the, uh, roster. Appreciate that very much. If anyone has any correction to the roster, please let Deborah know quickly so that she can correct it before I start putting all these numbers into my memory.
Dennis, just one quick question, if I might?
Sure.
I think you, you talked about for these committees that you're just a bit more of an ad hoc basis. So I wondered, Deb, if you could just speak out anything that's upcoming, whether it's site plan or, um, application review and things like that. But it's just worth just making sure that we hear those words rather than just read it anywhere else, so we can think about if there's anything upcoming we're interested in.
I think all the work that has been done by our professionals on Elite and on Parisi, uh, Samantha did a marvelous job of, uh, asking the engineer, and Parisi's engineer to review his plans and revise them. So I don't know exactly what that's going to look like when it comes in. Whether or not that requires review by the members, I'm not sure. I think, uh, Parisi has their marching orders, and they know what they've got to do. The next one up.
It is more about the park and the pre-app, and the, um, site review. Is anything like that on the docket in the next month or so, Deb, without reading the?
Not at this time.
The next one that we will probably see is, um, uh, uh, the Greek restaurant on the Elks Club property, although it is still not firmly settled which board will see that.
Um, okay.
And Park, uh, Deborah Park, last year talked to, uh, developer who wanted to subdivide a property on West Dogwood and Carlton. Do you know where that application is?
Actually, it's Old Forge, and that's.
What did I say? Yes, you're right, Old Forge, I'm sorry.
Old Forge, yes. And that's, I have been informed that it's on its way. It has not arrived yet.
Okay, but Park's already seen that, so that will be ripe for site plan review when you get to the point of, uh, completeness. Is there anything else staring us in the face right now?
Master plan.
No, I'm talking about the, uh, David's question.
No, nothing else right now, no.
I'll, I'll tell you what I'm waiting for is the, um, the biggie at the sewer plant. The, uh, there was, there's a deadline on, uh, upgrading the sewer capacity, and sooner or later, we're going to have to see something of a site plan, and that's going to be big. And.
Yeah.
Bigger than what they already got approval for?
Well, well, all they got approval. Well, all they got approval for so far is the garage to house the trucks.
Okay. Well, there's more.
They're gonna. They're gonna need major improvements down there in order to get an application in the DEP to increase their license capacity. And that will involve a bunch of stuff. And we're all going to have to become a little more more familiar with how sewer plants work in order to go through that. But quite frankly, I don't know how big that will be and I'm hoping that it comes soon.
Yeah, that's an interesting point that Dennis, I'm curious to know how soon that is because it can't be far away. Be nice to know what their plans are for that.
The construction into the approval will take some time. The construction will take some time. And even when it's after it's constructed, there will have to be measurements taken and a license application filed with the state. And all that has to be done in time that we can start building the projects that are queuing up behind sewer capacity.
Yeah, yeah, interesting.
Let me see. Where's Brendan? Is he still here? Brendan? Is any is a township committee in any way, shape or form tracking this?
Tracking. What's that?
Tracking the New Jersey American Waters' schedule for meeting their commitments to upgrade the plant.
Yeah, yeah, we are. In fact, I think we we said that we would be having you know, checking in with them on a regular basis as to where they are.
Okay, and some of us are concerned that we have all allow enough time. I mean, if they're expected to get approval from the planning board of their site plan on an overnight basis, if that's part of their schedule, that may be that may be incorrect.
Sorry, could you repeat that, Dennis?
I'd like to see their schedule.
Okay, all right, Bill. I'll talk to I'll talk to Nancy.
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you.
I mean, if you if you drive down there, they have obviously occupied that building in spade. There's a lot of trucks parked there. There's a lot of activity. There's a lot of trucks running in and out of that place. And and that's all operational, I'm sure. But somewhere in the background, their engineering department's got to be doing something and I'd like to get a get around that schedule.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And aside from that, David, I don't know of any other projects that we can count on as needing a site plan review.
Okay.
Although I'm sure that they are there.
Yes, it's good to discuss them in in this forum so we know what's upcoming and we can, you know, I don't, you know, have, you know, whoever wants to sit and do those those committee tasks.
Just a reminder, our next meeting on February 8th will start out with the fence application at the pump station on Valley Road. And then we'll segue into master plan. And we will discuss the and evaluate the schedule that the committee is presenting to us and talk about any issues that you think should be upfront in their deliberation.
Chairman?
Yes.
Just to follow up with the question Mr. Jones had before, it appears that the storm flooding in New Jersey is available on YouTube. Posted four days ago. I I didn't see it, but I'm assuming it's the same one.
Do you have?
Send the link out.
Do you have that link, Tom?
Yeah, I just did a YouTube search. I mean, I could send it, but I'll I'll send it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, you might want to confirm that it's the right one. It's Garden State Laboratories. About the same exact title, it's an hour and 16 minutes long, so.
It sounds right.
Yeah, and I sent Deb just because it was easy, Deb, if you could distribute that link out to the members on the Climate Resilient Workbook. Thank you. Because I know I'll miss somebody inadvertently. Just one question concerning the schedule. Deb, do we have enough information that you can give me a sense of of meetings, at least in the near future, that will be available for master plan related activities? Work it, reengineer it the other way?
You know, I think we'll have a better. I really think that we have to wait until we see what happens when Elite comes back first for me to be able to get into that.
Gotcha.
I mean, because what we could do, as long as we're giving Elite one meeting a month, technically, the master plan could have the other. Let's hope that Elite doesn't take more than one or two meetings, but we just don't know how the public will react. So I think we'll be able to gauge it better after, you know, at the end of February.
Ideally, we can finish with Elite before Parisi decides to come back in.
Exactly. Yeah.
And that'll that would give the master plan one meeting each month from now through the summer.
And if the applications stay as they are, I mean, we could technically just make that plan, Don, then going forward.
Right, and I've got to work with the the committee in regards to just, you know, how much we need to be doing back ourselves. I mean, a lot of this, we've got to cook up. A lot of this is we've got to get our ducks in a row. So we'll come out with the schedule by the 8th and we'll have that discussion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone have anyone else they would like, anything else they would like to talk about before we adjourn?
Dennis, did you get any committee reports from the township committee? Or that Brendan spoke to? Was that sufficient?
Yeah. I mean, about the about the I think I think you'd asked a question about the redevelopment site if we were wanting to expand it. I mean, I think the the general feeling is, you know, we've got a lot of things going on right now. So let's just see how these things all pan out and, you know, we'll certainly consider it. But at the moment, there doesn't really seem to be a need to do anything to expand it.
Thank you, Brendan.
Chairman, again, real quick, just regarding the Elite application, seeing that we have a new engineer on board, are we going to be getting a new report from them? Are they going to take a look at it?
Yes, you'll be getting revised reports.
Yes. Whoa, we got a report for Elite from Ferraro's come.
I don't know that it was circulated to the entire board though, yet.
Oh.
I will. I will circulate the new documents and everything and post it this minute.
Yeah, yeah. If you haven't seen, I saw it, but I didn't know if everybody got it. Yes.
No, not yet.
It was a very nice. It was a very nice report.
Thanks, Dennis.
I'll circulate all the reports, the revised reports and the revised plans and get them up on the website this week.
Okay, thank you.
I'm waiting for someone else to comment or make a motion to adjourn, whichever comes first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Richardson and Mr. Ray.
I'll say all at once.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.